All right, at this time, I'd like to call the Crystal Falls meeting quarter, seven o'clock. Start with. Ball.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Southey.
Here.
Councilmember Tommy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder. Here. Councilmember Roll. Here. Mayor Adams.
Here. Lizard play.
Yes.
My little agents, sir, the line of the United States of America. We see the republic which is sentence on probation. Clear now, if it's all with the liberty of the US. All right. Before we get into the agenda piece, I know many of you are here wishing to speak. Trying to speak about anything that's going to be during open forum. If you're anticipating a different time to speak, there will not be one. So make sure you put all the yellow sheets ahead and get that to me. I hear a number of you have done that already. And thank you for that. All right, I have an agenda before us. We're hoping the agenda may.
Make a motion.
Thank you, one for a second. Brendan?
A second.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Paul say nay. Motion carries. Our consent agendas before us, I'll read that into the record at this point in time. The minutes of the following meetings. The City Council work session on July fourteenth. Council and Parks and Rec Commission special joint work session on July fourteenth. City Council regular work session on July eighteenth. Regular meeting on that same date. Special work session on July twentieth. City Council work session, special work session on July twenty first. Another special work session on July twenty sixth. Another special work session on August fourteenth. We will, a list of license applications submitted by our city clerk to the city council about this is on file in our office. Adoption of a resolution accepting the donations. And adoption of a resolution or an exoneration. An assessment for all the firm of the assessed. Setting a public hearing brought to the city in two thousand twenty two. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that. Brendan, just. You making a motion to approve that this, the same agenda is right? Thank you. Looking for a second.
I'm good.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Paul say nay. Say. All right. Motion carries. Next, we have open forum. We're reading kind of what our guidelines are for. City Council appreciates your insistence about our desire to set aside some time. During each meeting of open forum, providing an opportunity for all speaking times. Whether it's a three minutes, a topic discussion, a meeting to attend. The mayor, as residing in office, officer can extend the total time around the topic by reasonable note acting maybe taken on any item brought up for the council location warrant. It comes to make place items for discussion of open forums, such as the council meetings or conferences. And that doesn't negate the fact that it's already on the agenda for a lot of what you're talking about. So we do have. A pile of papers. Just give me a second, I gotta sort of. All right, we're gonna start with UDC amendments. So the hero.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, please state your name and your address now.
My name is Carolyn Hope. I live at thirty five, New York, North. First of all, thank you for the time there to discuss our concerns over some of the some proposed UDC changes. I would like the city to show the potential on these amendments. But in the public street access, there are obvious safety reasons. Why the city requires lots to have public street access? For one, it is necessary for emergency vehicle accidents and to provide efficient and effective service. Imagine someone that is located suffering from heart. The extra time will take the ambulance to stop at the center, find a new sign directing them to the alley, processing that information, driving around the block, providing the alley, finally arriving two to five minutes later. One more. These are precious life-saving minutes. Or maybe it is a woman suffering from domestic abuse. And it takes responding officers additional time to get their hook. When managing a hook from ladder system with its completely replaced setup is only being sprayed, getting out with powerful tin wires. Trying to deploy a sewer ladder group while blocking other emergency vehicles concerning the city. Now try this in the winter at two o'clock in the morning. How would you feel if one of these situations were your problem? Alley's are not streets and should not be used as if they were. Contrary to staff summary for item twenty eight, there are multiple ordinances specifying facing that access as confirmed by the district or its ruling. For item thirty, and by staff's own previous admission, sixty six thirteen is the only property lacking the required principal street access. Staff repeatedly and wrongly claims that sixty six thirteen's former home faced the alley, although this did not no bear in the conformity of the new construction. Auto evidence clearly show that the previous home faced thirty six seven as required by the UDC. Again, mistaken in effect. These proposed UDC amendments must be amended.
David Deason? I'd be pleased to be a decent. I go sixty six oh three, but it's there in the north. House for signing the bottom of the UDC amendments. Planning permission recommended denied. And also there could more than half of fifty four amendments. There are a lot of my own issues. Final suggest about a grass through the. Very complicated. Speaking. To the staff, we will typically fail to correct the way. Kirk, our authority point is a blank of the UDC. City is proposing these amendments because of laws and laws. It was ruled last Friday, law. These amendments are transparent. Pretend to veil us in the out of consequence. Topic of bad citizen in city or city life. Not the right solution to the public who's in Boston. Staff continues to misrepresent facts and consequences of both the decisions. Item two, laws and through laws, based in any which way, only depending on who the administrator or local administrator had to do. Just imagine the chaos and hot part of that. Nor into that. Right, left. Under quarter seven. Put a law rules certificate as a permit to protect it with no inmates. Project cannot be in a dependent manner probably that project. Six six one three duplex, condition is right or set. Non-genuine part, this is exactly why the city want change with the UDC rules. So planning reports of previous building permits for six six oh nine, new one. We're in battle with a new permanent violation. One three. Flats for oh nine and eleven are recorded. Then the economy six six one three is not. The city edition government commits a plan that was not in excess. This is not in trouble. Three thousand three, micro science nonsense. General operation window of opportunity that can be limited. Ask the city to comply. Anyways, I would say, city, hold. We don't do diligence. And not rely on the credible information of the city staff. Lead items one, two, fifteen, seven, twelve, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty eight to thirty. We do the full amendments. Still, the head of premier, we're getting stuck in this, this mess. I'll need to do the math. Make sure you move forward with the developments. We have people personal. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jason?
Well, my name is Jason Briggs. So thirty five, boarding carrier, I'm in North, time and prayers, and I talk about the UDC amendments. As you can see, I believe some of these amendments be problematic to the elements personal. They will fundamentally require access from a facing, allow qualification of undersized not for lots, use to be used and extended global. I feel the UDC change will bring with it a future to add a development on neighborhoods. All of the amendments, I think, in about five sizes, whether it be attached or detached, saying that the eight forty five hundred foot long qualified development of the standard for drive is questionable. Due to the fact that the average US compact and size cars sixteen, fourteen and a half feet in length and six feet in width, majority of car will not dip inside of crowds as well as doors to open. Let's see, amendment twenty eight dealing with street running and accessory requirements to subdivisions, just imagining a bottle and a pool street access whatsoever. Sure, some cities do allow access via shared driveways and private streets. This is not the case of this amendment. Improved alleys are not shared driveways. Alley's are not public streets. The city that allows shared driveways are always lit and specification requirements to ensure emergency vehicle access. And there's another practical issue. There are no similar guidelines here. These proposed amendments would allow anyone to plot from any included alley regardless of how inadequate the access provided by that alley. There are a lot of amendments on the table. I feel some more than others need to be taken quite seriously. If you truly value your neighborhoods, the amendments must be tied with exception to amendment number thirteen regarding the new.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anybody else on this topic? Okay, I'm gonna, for sure, I'm gonna have you under a different topic. Just because of the restraints, you're welcome. Step forward now.
I'm not.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, staff. I have a plan in commission. And I'm leaving last Monday. This public hearing being in front of us, we need to bring the allegiance. And I was generally want to see the UDC amendments and just presented that as some cleanup and some clarify some stuff that's genuine. And if not, most of that or half of it may have been just that, taking the word multi study out to multiple. That's in the brain, that's okay. Yeah. But then when we started digging into it a little bit, we want that stuff up to me the most, what was the garage? And I looked at the garage, it was, but it's in, in a paper, it says, we share that the garage is wide enough for a vehicle. But yeah, we put the minimum size is eight feet by fourteen feet. I'm not sure what size vehicle we're looking at, but I did a quick Google search and a minimum car garage is public one. So you look at that and go, why would we choose eight by fourteen? Most hard remember, maybe a smart car. But you're not gonna open the doors at eight feet. And I have it on the next floor, which is a bad name on a lazy business, but six and a half feet, I'm not gonna open my doors. I'm not, it's fourteen and a half feet or sixteen feet, I'm not gonna park in the garage. I don't know where that language came from, but I think that means three, three. Our parking lot requirement was so compact car is eight by sixteen. So we're asking for our parking lot space to be larger around the parking lot garage. That seems a little simple. But I think that one needs to be examined. And then the condo I dream divided ownership without the lot, I kind of understand it, but not a hundred percent would like to. Seems more special than that. And then the, the whole lot, we're adding an alley and some pieces, we're taking out alley and there is no sitting or thinking, what? How many properties in the city at present could possibly be affected by these? Why are we making these changes? Why are we gonna threaten to us? And I'm like, well, we have ninety eight hundred houses, households, approximately. I don't know how many, this is moving fast. And I don't, I cannot be that many. And I think the, that is told that you guys have a work session on this on May nineteenth to present it to the planning commission for a public hearing. We have low, I mean, we should have had a list, right? The city council, the planning commission should have a work session. Back over, what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, we're sitting there in this meeting with a public hearing, people are asking these questions, but I have no idea why we're doing this. And so what I think is, with quick conscience, I would not. Get up your timer. I said timer. Okay, I, I really determined to please table it and let's have some discussion between the planning commission and city staff and the city. I don't, you don't hate to remake this decision. I think it's, we very, very, very. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Rachel?
So the subject that I want to.
Can you bring that mic down for me? Okay, very good.
Um, so the subject on, the, 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 um, there's ten acre grass right now planted by that group part. Um, people. It's all, um, on there. Um, most of the grounds have been used, but it takes one or two steps, one step, no way to, um, to move it home. Um, so that's for me. None of those, those ideas, um, that there is already funding for. Um, and there's normalization to go through the process. Um, taking out backgrounds and, and in primary, where there would be twenty children, twenty one, we wanted in grass. It would, it is strongness. I mean, I have, I continue to make speak this strong because it's the new thing, it's the reason why. And that's street practice, you know, you continue to talk somewhere there. And this would offer to prepare the, the idea of having, of, 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 I personally have been doing some research on, I have a finding on that. Um, I don't know, many people know that, but apparently. Years ago, thirty years ago, we actually had. Why is this area? Um, and worldwide, by, 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 um, one of the things that kind of I need in my, in my, are, um, very, very things. Um, the, you know, um, those client books, most of the, 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 they find that it's not on brands. And the, you know, will fly from the, um, the flash at a certain rate and then to, and that's how the male will, that it's appropriate. Um, and, and she, um, it's long time. And that's how keep finding children, finding one of them, in the dark, can take, um, well, people progress, um, or if you're, you're, you're looking right. Um. If we could restore contact for the fire trials, um, that, um, years from now, people could, um, we, as a city, could have that, um, in, at night, where people could go and have their, their meetings. Um. And that, I don't think, we create a lot of nostalgic memories, um, for young people. For you guys. I also would like to share a photo. So.
Just finish that.
So the, up here are the prairie gardens and down here are how deep they're being sown. So we're talking about current securstration of this project. We can do a very controlled, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Which is, which is, which is, which is, which is. Seeing an awful approach, I'm gonna go with this form. All right. At this point. We have a. We're gonna have a. Oh, hearing on installation, I'm vague, you know, six thousand, this is my role. I'll start with Daniel's, I'll see if I can bring us up to seat us. Okay. I believe Matt's bringing up my PowerPoint, which we also have a friend doing tour before. If we do that. They just got four quick slides. Uh, yeah, as we said, this is a public hearing, it can basically be with, I took it out and let it go. Um, the next, the next slide just shows you the location of the property. Um. The same heavy hall. Um. So it's, what happened here goes in nineteen seventy four. Uh, the area in yellow is clad good with the landline or square seventh edition. It was produced in council at that, at that time. Um, no utilities are located within that fifteen seventy four even. However, the home was built over that even in nineteen eighty eight. Um, around that same time, the city received a new easement in the western area of the property. And the city utility were installed in that area, not in, in nineteen seventy four. So, fast forward to today, the applicant, I should say, is, uh, she wants to sell the home. And, uh, her title company is asking for this, this, uh, sort of thing to be cleaned up. It's a, 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 you can see it on the screen there too, just that the, the house was built right over the beach, so it's kind of, so. So today, we're just being asked to adopt the resolution of what we're preparing against the rest of the, for two thousand. And I have a little question, you have me? I believe the applicant's son, John, is online? Courtney's online? Okay. Any questions to them on this issue? This is straightforward. Um. So this drainage easement is not going to affect any drainage on the property going to the neighbors in any direction behind that, correct? We're still gonna retain just a small portion of the, of the, of the property and still, but yeah, this, this is just right on the bottom of the lot, so it's for the purposes. So also there is some, some easement there in the back. There's a, 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 there's[1532.04]
Anyone here who should give testimony on this issue? Seeing now I will close the public hearing. For the resolution of the council.
Make a motion proving a resolution vacating a drainage and utility easement that's in the flat, landline square, seventh edition.
Thank you. The second, Brandon.
I'll say that.
Thank you. When you put your arm around this, great. All right, call members in favor, please say aye. Aye, we'll say aye. Yeah, the army comment is the person closest to me, it's a person I never see. So they put their arms, they're like. So that's that's what I kind of. Um, next is the regular agenda. First item on that is to spend $2,000 dollars or greater. I'll bring that into record at this time. Oh, our August town insurance premiums for nine thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. Logist for monthly application support. For utilities and fiber project in hosting for seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Min para for employee required city contributions. Uh, for eight eight seven twenty-two, twenty-two, sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Northwest asphalt for the two thousand twenty-two utility. Excuse me, utility construction project. One hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Center for Energy and Environment for Home Improvement Home and Grass for twenty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight hours. Local males joint water commission for February through April. Water class four hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Charles Anderson for construction for the police department. One hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. That council for wastewater services for August. One hundred and forty-two thousand fifty dollars. Shortelli Hendrickson's for two thousand. Utility reconstruction mill and overlay projects for seven thousand one hundred and three dollars. Cooper construction for the new place building thirty-two thousand seventy-five dollars. Golden Valley Joint Water Class, June Water Cross, two hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh, largest monthly application is supported. Uh, fifty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Many pair of employees required contribution for payday eight by twenty-two, sixty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Total disbursements of twenty-five thousand dollars per grade is one million five hundred and seventy-six thousand forty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Any questions on any one of these items? Nancy.
Um, this is just a comment, I just pointed it out again, there's a title in Metropolitan Council line, probably not important if there's an extra hard waste water. So it just like, I just thought I could be correct, but you know, some rest of the questions.
So why didn't we say that waste their water? Yeah, okay, I think Steph go go.
Yeah.
Golden Valley Joint Water Commission. We. Why don't we get such a delay on all those, because they just build.
I think they're just, yeah, they had some staff turnover. They've got finance firm, that's my guess.
Uh, I'll start you, Ma. Anything else? Right, with the promo cake. Please.
We'll make a motion to include these, those appears over two and five thousand.
Great, thank you, John.
Let's say that, Martin.
All right, call members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say aye. All right, next, I'm seeing on the regular agenda, council, instead of the first reading of the ordinance, we're wanting. Fifty-two forty, West Broadway to T C P B for the fifty-eight unit apartment building. Then also to steer it into addressing the council's.
Yes, uh, this is the first reading for the problem of the property for industrial, it's non-centern plant facilities. Next. The next screen. Uh, this screen, this shows the the here in the always area that we published, we said those were two. Uh, the area north was also published in the seventy-four, um, city website, um, the property itself. And to five neighborhoods on the next door. Okay. This is just a recent area of old that shows vacant lots. And it's now uses. Next. Uh, Crystal Health Group, which is also a real thing, have been performing a project to vacant property. Like fifty-two thirty-two dash fifty-two fifty-six West Broadway. And they're deploying to build a new four-story fifty-eight unit apartment building. The building will contain a mixture of one, two, three and four bidding units. Uh, it will also on the main level hold out post-erhabbing community growth and administrative offices. Uh, sub parking will be in the basement garage and the rents will be in a surface parking lot and private facility. Uh, so standing for questioning the rezoned property to town center plan development, if you call T C P B. They're also in the future, we've created all three requesting that the four lots be facility, but the one single lot. And also vacated animal easement on one blocks. Uh, and then the new platform dedicate easements for property. Now, both applications can be considered by the council at the second meeting, these are the orders. Next. This is this one at our twenty police compares to our twenty-four comprehensive plan. Uh, the designation for the lot, the lots, uh, we are counting a mixed use, which is described as a vertical or sideline centric mixture. A multi-family residential, uh. Institutional, commercial, industrial uses, so this is the indicators that will have this essentially in this area. Uh, the density here is twenty-seven minutes per gross acre. Uh, so. So that's within the range for the T C P B. Next. This is fifty-six inch height for the property. Uh, you can see the the proposed building, uh, is closer to the West Broadway. Um, and then the tiny building, the purpose park area. And all through the north, there there's the entrance to the underground. Next. I'll just go through some of the normal site elements for the project. Uh, building setbacks, except for the front setback, uh, the building will be required setbacks. Uh, the T C P B allows flexibility in zoning, it's not a theory, it's flexibility, so. I'll go into that later in the briefing session with those with the requesting for flexibility, but. One of the things that they're requesting flexibility is for is the setback. The maximum front setback is ten feet when they want to push the building back for four feet. Uh, second, uh, parking. The building will be provided for a hundred, hundred seventeen total spaces with its underground. Fifty-two in the basement and sixty-five in the surface parking lot. Uh. They also are requesting a little bit of flexibility to have. Fifty-two covered spaces and closed spaces, that can say rather than the fifteen that's required by the U D C. Uh, stormwater magic, there will be a large stormwater chamber underneath the proposed surface parking lot. Uh, impermeable surface will increase uh, in three blocks, um, from fifty-six percent to sixty-nine percent. But the maximum here is seventy percent, so they were full run under. Uh. And then, as always, the goal, the goal manager will light the lighting. Uh, continue with the global site elements, utilities. Uh, the building will connect with existing water and sanitary sewage. Uh, this is for new new drainage utility in the on the flat. Uh, landscaping, uh, there are basically no trees in this property right now, so. Uh, they're, the applicant is closing the plant thirty-nine new trees. And that's gonna be the list there, this Blackwood Stables, Austrian Pine, those redwoods, some of the varieties of the plant. They'll also be providing two, two varieties of shrubs, which is spring with the building foundation and the carpet. Uh, they're adding sixteen light bulb and seven wall fixtures, which should are running the requirements of our U D C. Next. Uh, as I said earlier, uh, the applicant is requesting five areas. To uh, perfect the building from our T C P B regulations. The first is, I said earlier, was the number of enclosed spaces, they would like to reduce that from the part, the required fifty-eight to fifty-two. So what our U D C says is that they are allowed to do that if they can have, if they have a rationale to do that. And the rationale here is that because constraints within the building, the residential requirements, they can't fit in one fifty-two space, so. That's the action. Uh, glated, uh. The minimum requirement for the first floor is fifty percent and thirty percent for the upper floors. The applicant is proposing thirty-three percent for the first floor and twenty-seven percent for the upper floors. Uh, we believe that the intent of the fifty percent requirement was for building for that of non-residential use on that floor. Uh, we got this by a model ordinance, we created the T C P B, so that's. We were, I wasn't really thinking about this, that's the way. Since we don't mandate that, that's not a useful requirement, so. Uh, we are, so staff is supporting our goal reductions in raising. Uh, it also will, that reduction is raising will also help the building achieve, help the building achieve energy goals. Uh, first floor height, this is similar to the glazing requirement, uh, the glaze, and it was pretty low height requirement, uh, we're going to do use that from twelve feet to ten feet. And again, it's a, that's really based on how we would have that phenomenon, which should use the building on the first floor. So that's what I've come up. Minimum street or building street footage, the minimum requirement is at seventy-five of the lot, seventy-five percent of the lot will be covered by building. They would like to reduce that to sixty-nine percent. Uh, our due, our U D C does allow a reduction all the way down to sixty percent. If the request meets the objectives of the T P D's listing. So the fighting here is that just natural ran stick. Including over thirty trees along the street and parts of local event or behind the building. Static yet being achieved by the writing of practice, the best way to find the room and supply. And then lastly, it's the front setback issue. As I said before, the the maximum is ten feet along West Broadway, but they would like to reduce or increase, I should say, to twenty-four feet. The rationale that after providing that they would like to build a front porch, it steps leading down to the sidewalk, so that's why they want to push the building further back. Uh, again, you have the area in front of the building, the empty man's face, a bit of a century friendly environment. Between the oldest store of trees and uh. This also reflects the reality that West Broadway is counted as a factor of urban street.
Matt, could you enhance the slide, please?
So those are the five areas of the requesting flexibility. Next. And here are, and we let we try to at least the building elevations, there at the top is a color rendering. Of where the building looked like and the spaces against Broadway. On the bottom of that slide is the the north elevation. Next. And then on the uh, uh, the the east and west elevations are also showing too. You can see the uh. Should have pointed out the ride from the north central entrance. Uh, so uh, just the plan commission held a public hearing on August eighth and recommended approval of the rezoning. Certain conditions and staff report, noted on the public provider comments. Uh, so tonight you're being asked to approve first reading of the rezoning ordinance. Uh, the next step will be September sixth. You would do a second reading, we would also consider a lot consolidation application and elevation. And then further down the road, the construction will begin in early twenty-three, complete by mid twenty-four. So and despite you having the applicant, so same, maybe cars also here, so.
Go ahead, John.
So you mentioned the change in the setbacks that we can have in ports, did they provide any type of drawing?
Uh, it's on the elevation there. The color rendering will show me. One more, so it's. Uh, there, like you kind of hard to see, and you can see the uh, front porch at the bottom of that. It's also, I believe, it's also, it's on the elevation guard, which was.
So it's enclosed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, so that we. Is that enclosed?
It's not enclosed, but porch, some porch.
It's covered, okay, okay.
But it's not, we don't.
So by shade during the summertime. Nice.
There you go, we had to keep, I mean, one of the drainage utilities on the front side, we need stuff to come down to get, get public drainage. Uh, we needed to keep those steps outside. Porch, the stairs may have. You can see that, if you look at the side, you can see that video was. I was putting a book, we need, we had to do some sort of side stairs off of board to get it from the front, and it's just. You have to go right to the middle porch, which would only be a problem.
Want to go back to the site plan net? It is a three, four slides.
Yeah, so I was trying to choose and find you for it sometimes.
Hard to see there.
Yeah, we can kind of, yeah.
So it's right, yes, you can see the stair, the stairs, and they sit right on, like, very near the drainage and utilities and then the front.
So this area, um, it's not the original town center that was proposed for transit oriented development, correct? This is what we extended to give more flexibility and what we're finding is. We got some transit oriented generic stuff that is not necessarily cutting. That is accurate. With with some.
I don't know who I'm asking.
The overlay district, we want to, we have a base district, which is based on the back of park, that's then has some, and it's mandatory requirements. Whereas the town center, which is much larger, town center PD is a much larger area. This this lot is in there, it gives flexibility, in case some of these. These requirements are not appropriate, but don't work out, or there's.
Right, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think that. The reason we expanded this town center area. To go further to the south, all the way to the C P railroad tracks, as we said. This site is our only vacant site in that entire two hundred and twenty acre area. But we recognize that. The first sites to be developed might actually be in the southern area, a little further from that department, a little further from Bastic, or a little further from the potential I R L station. Uh, just because the 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 market dynamics favor redevelopment here first, and then over time, redevelopment kind of spread throughout the area. So we didn't want to limit what the market was going to do as far as which sites were ready to develop, because there's no way to predict them. And so, um. The reason we're able to do this development on this site is precisely because the council made the decision to expand that redevelopment area south to the C P railroad.
And I think, I think what we did, that we might think it was to. To kind of make the property more versatile, more useful, uh, we didn't know how much the retail centers would change with. In retail centers. To allow them more versatility with the. He said we want that, so. Now, this is one of those. Adjustments we're making. In in later on. Uh, relating to the blazing.
Yes, there's a couple of amendments and we see what should be there. And we didn't, and that's why we found one of the transit oriented development type. Uh, short fall, and we took that and said that over there. Uh, at the time, it was just, I know it was some taxes, but it was just becoming. Uh, rather than having retail or commercial space on the main level, there's civic sector residential. So that just started stepping into that, that direction. And that's kind of what we're seeing here, that's why we're.
If I'm reading the T W S, right? Okay, cool. Nancy?
Uh, I I thought the porch looks nice, uh, but I have a question now. Looks like you have balconies out, and I know initially they're not going to be, but it would smell like your car. We are talking about, we're, 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 we're working with our energy line. Uh, we originally were going to consume a different certification and we're working for F H on third account, so with that requirement, I think now we're able to. Up me, to your building, uh, since they're not on Broadway. Where building is designed, Broadway, um, part of this whole main district without weeds, and we didn't embed into the building. And which would make. Our living rooms not conforming with the summer housing, they make you small. So the, along Broadway, they will not be about me, it's for me. Or actually, to have this three, there's some trees, and to the other side, it's the. Thank you.
Motion, everyone? Give me a look. Make a motion proving an ordinance amendment in the zoning map, rezoned property, Crystal House Group, located at fifty-two thirty-two, fifty-two forty. Fifty-two forty-eight and fifty-two fifty-six, West Broadway Avenue, from industrial to town center plan development. T C P D.
Second, John. I second that. All right, call members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll say aye. Number three, the council considers the first reading of ordinance commending C, the whole chapter, I'm unified to challenge. You can also just here to address the council on that again. Go ahead.
Okay, uh. This, as we said, this was the first, first reading of the ordinance, Jay Miller, uh, make this latest amendments to the new, new part development, or U D C. Uh. You review these at your July nineteenth work session. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on August eighth and recommended one elevator limit, except to allow. Uh, vehicle sales north of one mile a day, which was one of the, of the thirty-one. Uh, staff is recommending a present all, all of the amendments. Uh, most of the post, from, your post amendments are correctly verified with the time, let's. We're starting what we're doing, and then we're going to follow the slides, so I'll give you a few. First, beginning with the, oh, yeah, T I T last, um. This is the way to, yeah, people can be able to either divide the land, divide land or divide ownership. Uh, so our, it's a way that our U D C in Britain today. Uh, both dividing land and also dividing ownership, both have to go through something which process. So. It's it's staff, they're really, if it's only dividing ownership, so you say, uh. I feel there is a common minimal, where the ownership within the, within the structure itself is sort of. Sort of separating out. Not, and the land is not being vital. There's really nothing for the city to agree with that in most cases. Uh, so. That's what we're saying here, this amendment would really. If it's only a change in ownership or a dividing ownership, I can say, uh, that would not need to go through a segmentation process. Uh. We want to, right now, this is, uh, it's sort of, it's a disincentive to, uh. Turn buildings into four, or occupied units. Uh, the example, the string ones, there are the condos that thirty, thirty-three hundred, uh, bad. Uh, ten of those kind of units are now being rented. Ten of the thirty-two, I should say. Uh, so this amendment will, will prepare a level playing field and a level. Not to have another process to go through when the owner doing this really changing ownership within the building itself. We have to kind of. Next. The top, the next is really the town center, which we just referred to. Uh, these amendments would, uh. Change the leasing requirement, and also the first floor height. Uh, as I said before, these requirements will go to a model pay that resume. Relative would have non-residential usage, which is something that I'm just getting through today, which requires the saliva to use. But we did, but we don't, so the sense for us to have that would know, not this one, actually, use on that fourth floor. Uh, the other town center, the entire to increase the doorstep back and free. These are the ones, move. Uh, the other town center, the entire two, we freeze the doorstep back and free, these are ones, minimum of three weeks five, just to allow more things for third elements, third use. And then last one is just to allow, uh, new mid-block connections in the town center district to be, be not only streets, but also they could be pedestrian connections. Uh, so it really kind of opens that up to allow more flexibility in that respect. Next. Garage requirements, uh, this is really coming from a situation we had a few months ago where we had a builder who provided a, presented a building permit for a very small garage. It seemed very bizarre that it would be that small. And we realized that we didn't really have a way to deny that. Because we don't have a minimum garage size, that's where this is, where they're coming from, is just to have a standard of what a minimum garage size would be. Now, it's, it might be a minimum, so garages can be bigger than this. But this is just a sort of a setting, a minimum size, so that the garage is actually useful. We do require all single family homes to have a garage, so we want the, that requirement to be, to be useful and not just be simply. Which is kind of simple. Uh, the other requirement for, uh, for garages, I think the change is, is just to move, uh, one, a requirement for, uh, for carpet floors from one area of the U D C to another, so it's, it's, it's not being changed, it's just, it's just. So the next, the idea of virtual birthday secondary. Uh, we, we use this term, it was used in some of the definitions a lot, uh, secondary and principal, but we don't have any course finding requirements that, um, actually require buildings to face in specific direction or to be attracted in a certain way. Uh, because there are no regulations associated with principal secondary providers and access to buildings, there is no purpose to these terms to be included in the definitions. It's sort of confused with, with the product. Next is, uh, the subdivision sections, you can see, uh. We really wanted to clarify here that, so subdivision ordinance is really to regulate the creation of lots, that's basically its only purpose. So things like lot rent, lot area, lot depth, those technicals should be in subdivision ordinance. But we, we found that, and there's a little bit of some sort of mixture sometimes, just, or confusion with, uh, not requiring a home to, or just kind of mixing those with having a permit for a lot versus, uh, first of the place in the building or other improvements on, on the property itself. So for that, uh, U D C is not required on one basic street. Uh, there are homes in Criston without a door that base in the street. And also, there are many homes that, uh, where they, they're not accessed from the street, they're accessed instead from an alley. And in, in the police home, have neither a, a driveway nor a sidewalk to that street. So we just wanted to clarify that kind of separately, it was to, subdivision requirements should only be allowed requirements for lots, not, not what is, what is built upon. Next, uh, this network is, uh, vehicle sale that linked with that in North of Bari. Uh, and as said in, in July, it puts in an amendment that is going for three orders at sixty-four minute dash fifteen fifty-eight later. Uh, currently, vehicles still are non-conform to use of that property. So it's allowed to use, to remain there, but they can't expand because it's not a control of use. Uh, so this amendment would allow them to be legally informed of use on their property, and therefore they could. Uh, so it would just be, uh, this amendment would be just for a few properties, uh, north of, north of Bari. Uh, Superior Motor Site, so just two flat lots, and then also the Jack Auto Sales, which is one scattered lot. The next treaty will, that little, that little there. You can see there in red with the arrows, it's blank for this three lots that will be baked in the front row, which is literally an avenue. Uh, Jack's Auto will also have, uh, they also have another kind of lot, which is in red, Marshall, uh, that could be combined with their lot of bases, uh, rating. And they could, they could do legal sale, if they can sum those two lots in one. And then they have the street combined with the kind of a lot which is, which is in the. So, uh, the planning commission acting, they should recommend a design of the four permits, except to allow vehicle sale north of Bari, therefore, for your Jax. Uh, Dan, the people who spoke at the hearing were Dan Pearson. Uh, he stated he's in favor of the amendment to allow vehicle sale of his property to be no longer limited and non-conform use. And then also four residents expressed opposition to the requirements. Uh, so tonight, what you're being asked to do is approve the first reading of the proposed U D C amendment and recommend it on Saturday. Uh, the next steps will be, uh, a second reading and adoption since September sixth. Publication of the ordinance since September fifteenth, and then effective date of the ordinance amendment by April fifteenth. Some available for questions, I know I need to cover a lot of these, uh, of the thirty-one amendments, but I have any questions about any of those that you have.
Sure. Uh, go ahead, John. I just, uh, first of all, I was curious. As the owner of a small garage, what was inside the garage that the contractor was trying to make it through?
Uh, yeah, I totally recall, you know, what it was.
You know? I'm just, we're picturing in my mind, it was a small, single-stall garage, and they were converting a good chunk of it into like a laundry room or something, leaving something that might have only ten or twelve feet long. And maybe six feet wide, the way they were doing it. And so that's what brought to our attention, wait a minute, you can call it a garage. There's nothing in the code saying how big that has to be to count as a garage, to meet our requirement to have a garage. And that's what probably, so it, it was clearly not going to be a usable garage. Uh, and it was smaller than the minimum standard that was supposed to be the ordinance for that.
You know, with that, you could thought even, use it as a non-conform use, that, that is a bedroom or something like that, that's, that would be valid, you know? Definitely would, could be a huge issue, so. I think that's, that's a good idea to do a minimum garage space. So what is the proposed garage size?
And the following, it's eight wide, these are interior dimensions, eight wide, fourteen long, and then a minimum seven foot wide. Also, uh, third, form a grid point with braids that are smallest parking lot, which is maybe by sixteen. So the council feel that eight by fourteen is too small. You could, uh, move first reading with change to the length sixteen to match the minimum stall size parking lots that are slotted.
We have to, that also too. And the whole purpose of this is, and this is strictly AP system. Everybody need to pause that to build it, and it all. And let's, this was sixteen. And I'm like, yeah, eighteen by sixteen. It is rational. Everybody, they're going to go. No, it means it doesn't find what exists. I don't. All right, um. So the front line, not mine. I want me to take an eye check for that. This doesn't mean that I think you did.
Sure, uh, that's on page fourteen, right? Yes. Yeah, well, this is coming from, who is, uh, it's really final to important, a double footage lot. But you can see at the top of each, it's, it's the double footage lot. And three, so I'm going to do normal and south. Um, and I'm sure there's a description on, on page fourteen as well. Uh, there's this blue lot and a true corner lot, that's how they're going to explain it. So that's what this requirement, requirement is with, uh, applied to. Uh, and this is coming from the I C N, which is surrounded on three sides by streets. And you may remember that they, even though it's surrounded on three sides of streets, the side that they chose to, um, have the front entrance facing was building front, which, uh, is, uh, stop sign, which is, which is an interior lot. So that didn't make a lot of sense to me. Uh, so we, we thought, hey, there's been some, some situation where there's two and three streets involved, and so just, rather than just having a rule and it's going to be a, you know, that can make sense for a certain lot, it just, it just think easier to have a zoning administrator, uh, make that determination for that specific lot. Um, so to address the elephant in the room, was fifty-six thirteen, thirty-six, that is not a double footage slot. It's been characterized as a double footage lot, but it is not. It only has footage of one street, which is pretty safe. Uh, it had a double footage lot, has footage at least on two, where and across. And that, that's, that's described that well.
Well, this, this administrator, uh, already is applies to good stakes that are three sides.
Well, it says here on blue lot or true corner lot, you can see that it's lower shown on page fourteen at the top, where, uh, for those situations that this will, this will plan will be.
Thank you, um, I believe now the, um, they were to throw up or the distinction that the planning commission was the zoning administrator has the authority to determine the use, clarify that, or some more.
Sure, uh, it's, it's, it's what it sounds, uh, we, there's a picture of the, here a situation where it's not clear if the frontage, front of a lot should be for setback purposes. This is, this comes to a, in the play, like, we're trying to determine what the, the, the setback should be. Uh, if it's like for the, for the I C N, we're trying to determine which, since it was drawing on three and four side by streets, and the chart, the side that they chose to have a bit of a base with not an interior side, how do you determine what the setback should be? Uh, it was, it was, it just didn't make sense, and that, I don't think that's uncommon with these new lots, that there's sort of, we don't have a lot of them, I don't think. But they're just, they're sort of specific situations, which is easier, I hope, just to have a zoning minister make that determination.
That's right.
Right, but my, just to pick up on that twenty, uh, absent giving discretion like that, but look at the actual situation they're faced with and say, this makes sense, that doesn't make sense. Uh, if, if that sort of discretion wasn't given, which, you know, that's your, your decision, obviously. What then the task would be is to try to tackle with language, all the different scenarios, and, and dictate which way it ought to go. Which is, this person who wrote that language is challenging the best, because, you know, he's trying to conceive of every kind of situation. Uh, and then, and then talk about how best it should work. So, I mean, this isn't, if I might say, I mean, this isn't the zoning administrator, the zoning administrator trying to gain power, this is simply understanding that we can't foresee every situation. And, and so because of that, someone's got to make the call, and it's not the city, either through, uh, delegation sorted like this, or through a bunch of language, trying to formulate what, how you calculate it. Then it's going to be up to random to do it, uh, and so that was.
Who points the zoning administrator, sorry, I'm sure who is, oh, it's not.
That would be the city.
City, yeah. You would have pointed out, it's a, an employee, who's, maybe, ever, it is an employee.
I'm, I'm, my, my, my traditional city planner, it was only, they just say that in U D C where somebody. Said the zoning administrator in the city planner or something like that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
There's a section two in U D C that is now amended, that's the top shot, the authority of the zoning administrators. But they, but we can't turn that.
I'd like to address the numbers that were brought up, but during open forum, so if you could, items four through seven, we did those, that's right.
Sure, uh, before, first, number, number four, deals with, uh, C I C plans. If this is just to clarify, I mean, basically, what it clarified is that if they're only, uh, dividing ownership in a building, that would not need to be separate to a subdivision, we wouldn't have to go through subdivision process to, to have a C I C plan that is only divided ownership, not, not the. In that, it's your division, right, it's probably Steve Tom with, uh, association.
Yes, if I can give it just a little bit more background on that, please. So there's a series of statutes that are referenced there that allow for this, this sort of ownership of property to come to all the C I Cs. One of the, one of the statutes, uh, it reads off by saying, local reverence may not discriminate against these sorts of membership. Structures, if you, if you will, uh, the way I view that is, you know, if you want to put your personal home into a trust, you know, as part of, uh, retirement plan and that sort of thing, you know, we have nothing to say as a city. You know, or if you want to bring someone in and do ownerships, or can people own the property, all these different ways that property, property can be owned. Uh, the city really doesn't have anything, anything to say about that. And so that really carries over, the legislature said, that carries over to these other forms of, again, condo, C I Cs, that sort of thing. The, the, the issue with that, though, is some C I Cs actually involve dividing property. Uh, so there's different lots that folks own with that C I C, and so when you're actually dividing property, that's when you do have to come through the city, because you're actually affecting the property, dividing the lot. So you have to make sure that you're being able to supplement the regulations for that. But there are some C I Cs that are purely disparate, taking a whole apartment building and condoizing. There's nothing unlanded to be divided, and we don't have anything to say about whether you own this unit versus that unit and that sort of thing. So that kind of gets into that discrimination thing again, we kind of have nothing to say about the commercial structure. Uh, and in framing, trying to apply subdivision regulations, when you're just changing ownership structure of a building that's not changing anything on the actual ground, then it really doesn't apply. So it really doesn't make any sense to suggest that those have to go through, because there's nothing we can do. Uh, so it's just something that's beyond the city's regulations. And frankly, I think if you try to force them through the process, that discrimination play, uh, that I mentioned, that is raised quite quickly, so you, you can't tell them who, who will destroy.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks for that extra. Twenty-two. Um, second. Number five, I was letting you. That's on page thirty-two.
Yeah, this is just, uh, you have three, each type of review, type one, type two, and type three. Type two is, uh, the, these are approvals by city staff. And then type two is, is a, goes supporting the planning commission for a public hearing, with a recommendation, called a city council decision. Type three is the city council decision on. So for type one, which is the staff approval, all that it's saying is that I may consult with other city staff in helping determine if this, if this application should be approved. So the things that the, that the city staff will approve administratively are things like parking lots, new parking lots, uh, buildings where they're just, uh, they're, uh, they're adding on less than fifty percent of the building. Uh, so some of these laster type, uh, approvals, I would say. So this is just saying, I can, I can consult with the city engineer. He's saying, hey, what do you think about those applications? We do that for type two and type three, and so it was really, it was, it was innovation that wasn't included, it's like, well, she's kind of making it clear that I can consult with the people, other city staff, I should say, to, to. Let's just kind of make it clear that I can consult with the people, other city staff, I should say, to, to approve those applications.
And how about number six? On page three.
There's two on page three, six.
The planning review requires on the entire one review procedure.
It's one of the property files, right?
No, it's the second.
Oh, it's the second. This just, as I said, there's, there's certain types of applications that come in where it makes sense for the city staff to approve them. As I mentioned a few, or just a few minutes ago, additions to multi-family buildings or non-residential buildings where they're adding on less than 50% of the building. Outdoor storage of parts, parts of fuel in the industrial districts, telecommunications towers in the industrial district. And then a new one here, it's replacement of a multi-family dwelling or a non-residential building on the same footprint and with the same height with no other site changes in question. So this is just saying, let's say a building contains its, its, the knowledge that we need. Earthquake. So this would just say they don't have to commit a certain thing with planning commission, public hearing, examination, city council approval. And if the building is with, you know, with the back, they can say, they'll be back in the same footprint, same height, then we, city staff is approved of. That's what it's saying. And it's only for non-residential buildings and, and then like, which is multi-family, three units.
Three units or more?
Three units.
Is that clarified? Thanks too much.
If in the day it is, then multi-family.
Okay, thank you. And then for building permits in the middle?
Sure. Okay. This was, I was looking at the language here. This is for official use permits and state plans. They have up to a year after they receive approval from you to come in for building permit. But what the language says is, right now, as it's, as it states, is that not, it doesn't say a year. It says that they have to, one year from the date of city council approval, they have to have applied for the building permit and received building permit approval of that permit. All within a year. So that can be difficult in some cases. We, we experienced this during the pandemic where there was lots, I think, going around in financing, trying to get construction staff and just all sorts of particular issued material. Where they would submit a building permit, say like in May, and it wouldn't be issued until, say like August or September, not because we were driving therapy, but because they were, they were driving their fees. So because of the issue that was brought up. So I, I recommend a change in this. So it just said that the deadline is one year. The deadline is that they have to submit a bill within a year of the date of city council approval. So there are, there are deadlines for building permits that are just built within city, a building code. They have to, I mean, next one is, but there are deadlines for building permit approval where they have to make progress, I believe, within a city under, under building. So I was just trying to make this clear that the deadline is the building permit today. They don't have to be approved. That's, that's the, that's where the, that's the target date that they have to move.
Yep. Was a quick addition to that. So again, we're talking about expiration of the CVP. So. Right, on the expiration?
Yes.
Okay. So what this is attempting to do is trying to stop someone who's working diligently and trying to get the materials and get something built from losing the ability to actually proceed because the CVP arguably, no fault of their own, evaporated, forcing them to go back through the entire application process for the planning commission and through the council, just to get back to where they were and, and with the hope. So this is an attempt to have that a little bit of, not an opening, because again, as Dan explained, there are the limits on building permits. But this doesn't affect anything. This is just merely trying to say your CVP doesn't evaporate, evaporate strictly. If people apply for the building code and then a building permit.
And then, from what I was mentioning in the public forum, the next item is number twelve, building signage on page seventy seven.
This is required that relates to multiple family dwellings or English three unit or more. Again, this is not applying sixty six thirteen thirty six, because that's only two unit buildings. So this, this came from, so we'll not, multi-family's defined as three or more, three or more.
Let's be clear.
Yeah. And this came from the EDA lot at Queens, where we were welcome. Where that was, they had, they had an ambulance, it was on the street. So some of the units would be sort of accessed or facing the street. And two units would be facing, or have doors that are pretty far back to the street. So we wanted to be able to have a requirement that when the door, either a entry door for the back unit is not visible to the street, that sign would be installed on the public streets that said, hey, there's two more units back here. That's, that's, that's what this came.
Exercise is the next, number fifteen.
Yeah, I'm trying to get over that one.
Yes. Does it prove that affects?
What was there before? And they have, each unit will have three stalls. A two, two stall that was originally there and now it's, so it's, it exceeds by.
It exceeds the eight by sixteen or?
Even if you were just to look at the third stall, which, because we only require one stall. It's not, you need to go around. But even if you apply the dimensioning standard to the third stall for each unit, those are well over eight wide by sixteen. The original space between the two buildings was nineteen and a half feet. Roughly half of that is the new wall, the new cotton wall, which leaves net not interior width of the stalls. And I believe they're twenty feet long or something. So it's well above.
It's number seven, oh, what's her name? Right down low, let's see, number seventeen, which was on page sixteen and one or six, non-conforming lots.
Okay. Both this is a matter of way to clarify what is a conforming lot record. On page sixteen, we just wanted to say that this clarified, it does say unless, it doesn't have to comply with a lot requirement, we want to still all go back to that. It means lot area, lot, anything lot depth. And then on the other page. This is just the, the purpose of this, which is to clarify that, I talked earlier about trying to separate lot requirements from what was, was being built on there. So this, and it's written now, it's a little, it's been misinterpreted to me that we have to meet all the other zoning requirements. This is just to clarify that the, the thing that makes it determined whether it's a lot of regular or not is if it needs a lot of area, not width, or lot depth. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not dependent on what's built.
Can you clarify what zoning requirements has been confused with? May I have heard it separated or not to add to this?
Mr. Mayor, I think we're getting at here is that separation, bring regulations that control the subdivision of land versus the construction of buildings. And what this is saying is that the construction of buildings shall meet the requirements that you receive, even if the lot itself does not, but it is grandparented in because it's illegally not. Right? Paul, you have to clarify.
Take the minute, yeah.
I mean, there are protections for non-conforming lots. The laws change, the code changes, dimensional requirements, that sort of thing. So just because we have a garage, then because we current standard.
Yeah, yeah, it's so easy.
These pages still get to use it and a permit for that one to get replaced, even if it's the same size that we had before. So this is an attempt to try to clarify the, the rights that's afforded folks to build on their lots. They're not conforming lots, provided, you know, obviously it's a five by five lot, you're not building. But I mean, the, the point is, we can leave the city. But still exercising that right in the law, the utilization.
A good example of a, a lot of brands that doesn't need a requirement is the one we stole from EDA lot that was sold thirty five fifty six. Maybe, now that lot was like forty, actually it's thirty five two nine. So our new now is fifty. So that's way less than that. So what we did was we, the lot itself was available because it was planted a hundred years ago. The home had to be confirmed, upset by that, so we moved that. But in that case, the applicant asked for a couple of variances, but the idea is that they were supposed to move. So we didn't have a variance, we were to put the lot in the home.
Thank you. And then moving on.
Three eight.
What about eighty? Just as measuring distances, which is one oh seven, parents and parents are measuring distances.
Right. This is just a way to clarify that rounding applies to both of these requirements, the percentages and fractions and also the distance measurements. There was a, a challenge, frankly, to this on the sixty six thirteen. I, I interpreted this originally from that who was able to, I could have rounded the lot width in that, in this particular development. But according to the written interpretation there, so I believe our, my interpretation is originally correct. But this is just to, to sort of agree that the court wanted me to change this, clarify.
And Mayor, is this where you were asking clarification about feet versus inches?
Yes. Yes. So the answer I got, let's see if I can. Some, you guys could, it's a third by whatever we're talking about, if it be square feet or area. Whatever that may be. So it could be different measurements. But that's implied based on what we're talking about, which is defined elsewhere.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. If some regulations, maybe it's based on feet, some are square feet, some are percentages, a number of different things. So whatever it is, you can run around to the nearest, whatever that is. The nearest hole.
Where did that language come from, when we were rounding down? That was from the one ordinance that we, we did, I mean, you wrote that.
My foot fingers. Take, I'll take your map and learn the entire life and draw off the windows. Okay. Sorry. Uh, next to the twenty eight.
Uh, yes, twenty eighth period in the last three. And twenty eighth is regarding street coverage and access requirements for subdivisions. And several pages attributed to that one.
Right. Off topic, page seven. The designation award. This is from, a few minutes, it was born. This is just again, to clarify that if, it was kind of an interpretation question. Since the language that was there, right now, that says providing secondary moving assets to anybody's property, that was interpreted to mean it was shit moved. You could never use it as, as a, as the only access for property. So we, we don't believe that that's factual to what is found in Crystal. There are, as I said, with future, there are plenty of lots here at Crystal where the only access is to it all. That the lots that surround sixty six thirteen are only access property. There's quite a few others, if you drive around Crystal, you've seen quite a few lots that only.
Buildings.
Say that, say that curve again.
Buildings that don't, are not access. That have nothing to do from the building to lots is a whole different matter. And a lot is an access. But I don't want to get into that, that whole thing. What we're talking about here is, is again improvements to lots, right? Because that is how, I mean, that, there is nothing in the code that talks about, you have to orient your house this way. You have to access a primary area this way. We don't regulate that. When someone comes in for a building permit to build on a lot, we don't tell them, oh no, you can't put your driveway here, you got to put it over here. So we're talking about buildings, not lots. Well, when we talk about examples of, there are buildings that are accessed only from.
So that's like the vehicle traffic.
Well, that's the issue. We don't define anywhere. But that's what, what that means. What is, we don't say, well, for it to be a primary access, it has to go to a certain place. We don't say that. We don't have that record.
Mr. Mayor, the, the confusion has been on a lot division as opposed to a building that.
Yes, I think that's, that's what we're trying to clarify.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to quickly, I think the comment about, you know, there are structures looking at cities that are accessed. I think the, the reference is primarily to hit access to the garage versus going up. So we, you know, that happens in older cities, you know, with, with Alex, frankly, who's playing the brad. So when, when, when we have a building that's being built on a county road, oftentimes there's a little, if there's an option to do a curve there on a secondary, non, I'm sorry, non-town road, we always, we always try to steer people that direction.
Well, yes, right. That's, that's largely because of the county's, they, they have a policy, but we have to sort of respect. But, but the I think what I'm getting at here is that the Dan was talking about, there are, there are lots in the city that are not accessed from the street.
Sure, I got that.
It's, no, actually, it's, we're talking about buildings in the city that are not accessed from the street. That's, that's what we're talking about.
I think it's, I was thinking, I was thinking some other issues with libraries that I'm going to talk. But maybe it'd be like, like also like the law.
Each part of the law.
The law on property, whether that have four or five, four or five. Like the whole one, sure. Absolutely. Especially if it didn't want. Especially in one. That means even more. Uh that was twenty eight, twenty nine, now your requirements for subdivisions. Clarifying requirements to main aisles.
Would that be the one thing we want to do with the rest? This is really to clarify that when a new alley is established, these are the requirements, so it was confusing before that. If these should apply any laws, whether it's an establishment. So it's kind of, again, it's separating what is required for a subdivision, which is what's required. Building location, right, with improvementation. We're just basically separating these requirements, not have, not have requirements for the improvement that we're talking about in subdivision section.
Items on page one sixteen downwards is no home shall be oriented to face the valley. And we, thank you, Valley, please, uh to face the town, sorry. Can you clarify like when that was struck out?
Well, again, it's just trying to uh remove the subdivision toll to regulation of improvements on the property.
This is strictly for subdivision lots now. Okay, that's where I wanted to clarify the.
So I have an extreme four on page top, page one sixty nine. They are where they're talking about how hill is oriented for access, we don't say what those things are. In terms of access, right, so and that's number four, number three, it clearly regulates the built which in the in the subdivision section doesn't belong there. Yeah, it wouldn't go, like, if you're reviewing the building, you don't go to the subdivision.
Yeah, I see, I see.
Yeah, so that's why it becomes important out because you don't define primaries to their access, we don't say what, what does that mean, what are we required to qualify as well. So we don't, there's no regulation that is applicable based on. And again, when you're talking about improvements to property, that was a belong as far as. This is about division of land.
And last one is thirty, item thirty, we're there, guys, same deal. Subdivision requirements, this is on page sixteen, regarding clarifying subdivision requirements of our only lots.
I think if we're just, just to follow that, we can't go just like separating the regulation of lots versus how the building is situated. Mayor, I'm not going to get the page here.
Subdivision one sixteen.
One six five. Process of separating parcel of land into two or more lots.
Anything else, someone just. Just one, two, I guess. This is something that we, what we're doing here. Right?
Right, yeah.
Just, and how do you, how do you, how do you come across these throughout the year?
Well, I keep, I keep running this. Just again, as I'm administering the phone, it's not a big situation, there is that this this regulation doesn't work out, there's some problem with it, uh either from a practical application or that hugely notice, there's a situation in a lot of these where, which is like, well, that's not what was meant, that's not what it's. So let's, let's write it so it does very clearly say what is.
But it is, I mean, I'm used to, we do this every year.
We thought, we've, I took the U N T with the back there, uh four years ago, and we thought that or I would put that packages in the moment. And I usually think what happened because when you write a whole new code, you're doing different things that you didn't think of, or you intended for to apply this way and somebody applying it that way. So it's just just verify what you say. And keep it running this.
In other states, it's tragic, it's not just wrong.
So.
I can make a motion. Making motion approving and ordinance revising chapter nine of the Crystal City Code regarding, oops. I did, sorry. Sorry about that, uh making motion approving ordinance, making various amendments, chapter ten of the Crystal City Code. Oh, uh with the change. With the changes, yeah. Oh, yeah, the changing the grant, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Did I second that?
Uh let's get to the discussion. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just quick clarification of chapter five.
Oh, sorry.
B, not X. All right, um did you want to make a comment?
I can make a point. Uh very quickly, the reason I brought up all of these changes, I wanted to do due diligence, I really appreciate the public comments. And also from the citizens as well as the planning commission. And wanted to clarify, I, I was going to make a motion to table this to go back to the planning commission. Um the earlier discussion with going over each, I know that people had issues, but I feel that a lot of this has been clarified now, mostly to my satisfaction. I just wanted to let others know where I was coming.
I think we agree with it, I think we all agree.
Wanting to make sure this is a bad.
Yeah, and also to move forward with clarification and hopefully clearing some of the murkiness that sucks somebody in front of clarification defining things and then also helping others so that they can move forward too.
You have a motion on the floor, and there's a favor, if you say aye, uh I'll say nay.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
House member May.
Aye.
House member Bush.
Aye.
House member coming.
Aye.
House member, yeah, house number.
All right, uh we're going to take a quick break, we've been going for all our orders, let's take five minutes.
All right, we're gonna end our recess. So next item is six four. Also consider perstrating and permitting the many state over the chapter four. John Sutter is here, and there is here, there is here.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, uh well, this should be pretty quick, and basically uh there are three aspects to both amendments to one hundred and one seven, pertaining to. The first one, everything is a house. Uh the code implies that houses and buildings are different things, but houses are a type of building, no reason to have a distinction. You have to number buildings regardless of what kind of building. So that's items, that's. Number two, uh properties on alleys, we don't formally require that there's any address to be facing the alley, in addition, including these spaces. And this is a common requirement in other cities of alleys, in fact, um thanks to Mark, he got St. Louis Parks told as an example. And largely borrowed that from the subjective opinion here, as far as requiring building numbers on women facing the alley or close to the alley. Um public works, police, who don't require almost support this change, it would make their jobs easier out of the old, and again, awareness involved with most other cities that have. So I did do sort of a Google, equivalent of a windshield survey, and um I think in Crystal, even though we don't, and don't have ever required this, I'd say roughly half of the properties and alleys having number, um usually it's a detached garage close to the alley. Um roughly half, you know, or something like, there is definitely a mix. And so I think it's, it's kind of been a social norm, even though it hasn't been a regulation issue. And we would, we would do sort of a soft rollout, um while the ordinance is waiting to go into effect. Explain the public safety benefit to doing this, and encouraging people to do it, and then be probably forced on a conflict basis. Uh we're going to be a little more active than that, but at a minimum, we would do sort of a soft rollout, make people aware of this change, and basically just ask them to do it first. Because there is a benefit to them for public police and fire to be able to find their property from there. So that's all we're trying to say. The third item has to do with currently a code requires building numbers to be of a size to be readable from the street. But they don't say anything about whether they're visible from the street um or not visible, through some other factor, such as vegetation. About how big they make their house in the dirt, if there are trees in the wood, it's either how well the number on the bill. So that here is that the building official would have the authority to require property owner to place a restanding sign uh at the front lot line near the street, so that the the building number is visible regardless of what vegetation occurred between that point between the street, the front lot line, and the building itself, but the number is required, we still have that number on the building, this would be an additional requirement.
That's just a bit magic, uh could I ask them for that signs, for example, on one hundred and six, do we have all vegetation in fourth house? Would the sign be facing drivers, so we have delivery fire? Right now, the sign that says buildings are, you know, probably being built, it's facing the street, but not the traffic. So it's not readable, you know, you'll see a sign, what was that? Versus facing a driver either way, is that something you would consider or?
I think that's one of those discretionary things, uh because that if they were the property owner listening instead of standard sign that faces the street, which is the way most signs face. And we presume that a driver is still going out and looking for the sign, but but your point is, well, hey, this thirty six is a zero, so if the property owner is experiencing, I don't know if you want to keep face time, going to face a heat wave and wind up traffic.
Yeah.
I think these get accepted as maybe the intent. That's one of those, as I mentioned, one of those, those very unique situations where you want staff to have some discretion and flexibility to require something. Uh and I also wanted to say that in the, for that particular property, since you asked about it, when we approved the subdivision, that was a condition of that people. Subdivision was wiped out, now we didn't have anything to hold, we could make, so that was one of the reasons that we thought about this, is like, we need to have something in the goal, and it couldn't just be this part, or wouldn't just be this part. Any number of properties might let their trees grow and cover the building, and we had no way of dealing with it. So that was the reason for this, at least what I'm talking.
So with the soft rollout, you would give an example for those people that have an alley, like what the sign should look like, place the number of bills. You know, you know, it's better than some type of thing, right?
Yeah, we have a photo, um there are plenty of examples, and just grab one and say, you know, like this, this is what we actually do, we're accessory building, or your house, some homes are set way back by the, by the alley, we go back to the street, especially like in the Rockham neighborhood, for example. And so maybe it's actually the house that's fighting the alley, but we still want that number based. And we would have examples to show.
And then secondly, uh when you talked about something else by the street, uh are you thinking of like what rural areas, they'll have like those, those erudits signs or whatever, if you can see up the end of the road, you know exactly what property you're kind of, looking for my relatives out, anyway, so but you actually had an idea, but are you thinking of those types of signs out by the street?
That would be, as long as it's visible, it serves to purpose, okay, though, there are lots of ways you can do it, we don't mandate reflectivity.
Okay.
Um and it's going to depend on the facts and circumstances of that property, in terms of how it should be oriented, how big it needs to be um what the material is, so uh I again, this would be something that, I mean, most most situations, the sign at the lot line facing the street with standing orange letters is going to be covered. But there will be those cases where that isn't the best, and we serve and suggest the property line, I think you something to equip with that.
Visibility is your, is your, you know, input, is what you're going after. Can I talk to more?
No.
I'll make a motion to uh pass or for the revising chapter four, so the crystal city code regarding number, causes and.
Uh members of the board, please say aye, uh I'll say nay. Uh we're on the last one, so I'm just.
We are. Uh as a councilor, a member of a central thirty whiskey district, and I was for that, we required that the board looked at the budget early in the year, to clarify, it was one of the main decisions, I think, in the twenty twenty three budget. And at our July meeting, the board gave approval to the twenty twenty three budget, and it was presented in May. The budget is for Crystal, about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and most of that is being cost associated with an additional staff person when we lost a type of time association. Earlier this year, the board proved slipping that position into two captains, and so a portion of those costs are built into the twenty twenty three budget, the district is also picking up a portion of those costs in twenty three. But the big driver on the budget is starting our boost fees for the four engines, which I know we have several work session conversations, like multiple S forty over the next three to four months to that. So.
Excuse me, um that includes both the aerial and the.
The tower base is already built, and the four engines, we're adding that in.
In from that.
Yeah, in from. So you have the budget before you, um the city councilor, she's here, and she made certain, and she'd like to bring the very efficient. So I would ask. And just so you know, the council does have to act on this by making a spring. We don't have any meetings, and so we are considering, I hope we're considering that next. And so we are considering, I hope we're considering that next month.
We have the fire board that I already approved and were we've approved it. It seems like that should be the bridge over there.
It can't.
It can't.
Because we need to know what the, we, the city needs to know what the budget for this matter is because we walk into our budget. If we recall, four years ago, five years ago, we played around with the calendar, you know, the tax number bank was on. The third one, then, when we played around with it to make it better fit into our budget process. There's no, it's not ideal. I get, I get.
The, the, the challenge, the challenge I'm trying to deal with this whole time issue is our, as the state councils, discretionary is, is based on the budget. That's our own tool. Right? And if we're coming in on the backside, um, the tools not really a tool. For example, I mean, let's just take this budget cycle. We have a new employee position that's been approved by the fire board. And we want, oh, when it comes to us, that which is already carried in place. And so if we don't approve the budget, it was a big deal. And it gives kind of, it goes backwards. And I, I think this kind of goes to kind of reading the tea leaves. Um, i- if we get a, a, a grant for three new employees, right? Those three employees aren't going to have a budget of the past before we can number one vote. And it's not a climate saver grant. We're not going to see the budget affect for a year and a half for that. So again, we don't have any discretionary vote on fire. Now, we would like to have a, a council meeting with the two councils. And, you know, I was going to, I was going to talk away there about, you know, what is our goal? And that's some conversations off-line. And it came and it sat into, well, our discretionary power in this joint powers agreement is the budget. But we're a day late, a dollar short on some of these things. I, I, I think what I wanted to do is to figure out, fix that without being destructive, as it were. Um, yeah, and back into the space where I feel like something needs fixing again. So I don't want to do with that. I just want to be more frank. That is, I'm serious. I don't want to do with it.
It is a time.
Um, because quite frankly, if, if we have safer grant and the chief decides to implement three people, the fire door approves it, it's done. And then we come by a year and a half, potentially later and say, no, we didn't want that. So what happens then? Now, the fire district is responsible for paying back that safer grant. It causes all kinds of turmoil. That's not bad. Because the fire board has no obligation to come to us and ask the question. Do you or not, do you or do you not approve? And as we've seen with the application of the safer grant, doesn't matter that eight people said no, and three people said, or four people said yes. They can still do whatever they want. They did. Right?
Yeah, no, they did. I, I don't disagree with the conception and the timing. I don't disagree with that. But I think the other thing to balance, and I can interrupt you here, I'm sorry. The other thing to balance is one of the goals of the district review board is to do what is right for the fire district. But not exclusive or not, how do I say?
District review or tell us that.
Not district review board, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No, 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 that's a different body that I work. But not, we don't expect those fire district. Is there to do the right thing for the district? But it can't be at the expense of the city. So I think the board members, all those are doing the balancing. But that's why we see the chief Lars incoming before the council to talk about four engines or the safer grant, which yes, agreed that that wasn't the way the majority of the council wanted to go. But I think the board members, the district, I'm so sorry, what members, their board uh, members decided that wasn't the district in the future of the district. Understanding where Crystal Council is coming. You know, I think, I think it can be awkward. But I think that's, I don't know how you get around it. I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, you haven't got an answer either.
No, I don't. I'm sorry. You don't.
I have an answer. Yeah, it's a fire board job. I mean, that's, that's, you know, they need to simply tell us, you know, what their budget requirements are for, you know, for them to operate within the city. And that's what we expect of them every year. I do have another question. There's a portion of the budget which is kind of unknown. We don't know what it is until like September or, or October. You know what I'm talking about? The pension? Not the pension. If there's some, there's another contribution to the budget or. Uh, I remember last year, I asked you about.
Oh, are you talking about compensating absence or not?
No, 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 no.
Talking about the state and the.
City.
But we don't know what our, what we need to do to the fire burn pension.
Okay.
Until the state.
Right. And so that's a guest of it, right? And so that, that's also built into the budget too, but we have.
But in reality, we don't know where our first country, you know, where our insurance is about to be. We don't have so many variables.
There's a lot of unknown variables in the, in the fire board, which we pretty much have to go with until, till the end of the year. So fortunately.
But also that is why I bring the budget before you in May, so that we can give you the feedback till I can go and try to work that feedback into the budget before I bring it to the board of directors for approval. I mean, I try to give you the opportunity to give me your feedback when I bring it to the worst.
I just wish the police department would do that. But I mean, I mean, to, to the point is, you know, we, we have departments that have the same issues that, you know, they bring their issues to. And we have that, that, that's our, that's our duty as a council is to do with our, as the same way. And, and, and fire is just very different. It doesn't mean we don't have that ability because we do. Uh, you don't just say that's their. Right. That's put the chiefs, both chiefs' job to do the same thing. It's our job, the same to, to make. To question, right, against no or maybe. So. I agree. That, that's all I'm trying to sort out and figure out. But, but again, going, you know, back when, um, um, at one point said like, we rely on them like we do with all commissions for, you know, a certain level of of, uh, information to, to be able to help us in our job. Because if we were to, you know, sit on every one of those commissions, including the fire board, and we, we would be here, we would be a full-time guy. Absolutely. Yeah, we would definitely be, we would have to, we'd have to, there's no way I could afford to live. Uh, what, I mean, a, a, and being able to do what I need them to help me with. That still sent me, you don't have discretion. I understand you in that realm. Yeah. I understand. And, and we, I, I invited you to give me the best numbers. I'm not questioning any type of question process. So please don't make up what it is. No, I'm not. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Well, just a, just a comment. I know that, um, I think it helps the council if they're able to come to these meetings where you compare, when we go hashtag report, especially, um, number four. So it's always going through and questioning pretty much everything. You know, and offering suggestions to future budgets and things like that. So I welcome council members to, um, attend those meetings, especially on the budget discussion. Maybe that's a, like, one approach that may fall. So if there's something that plagued you during a discussion, you can bring it up. I don't. Just a.
That's, yeah.
Uh, I mean, I guess I just want to, just want to clarify. I think what you're saying is it just feels wrong, right? Where you're like out of order, we're, you know, we're approving the budget that's already approved. Then it didn't really go. So basically, we're being, we're being told, you know, to, that now I, I no, I, I, I swear to God, but it's, um, you know, I do like appreciating the process now. It could be completely different if we had, if it wasn't you, and I think that's what you're saying, sir, right? You, you do a great job when there isn't any surprises, right? Like, we have the budget. This was not a surprise. Right? Because we are on top of that, right? We, you know, I, even by being a part of the fire in the past, like, I knew well before, you know, uh, what you presented to us, well, of course, you have the cost. Now, there isn't a system in place. And if we're saying in our order is, it could be a surprise, right? And the council is going to be hamstrung to be forced to still have that approval this budget. Right? Uh, because it's already, it's already been approved before.
There's that process.
No, no, I, I think, I, I agree. You, you do a great job.
The process in the JPA that allows for you to disagree with the body of stuff, if you.
Go choose.
Thank you.
Okay. Was that a correct characterization or did I go down?
Um, I mean, there's special situations where where it's the process that's the problem. It is the grass. I mean, we're looking at the grass to try to figure. And at some point, I'd like to. Um, it, it doesn't, doesn't change the system. If what we should do, if we don't approve, uh, say a safer grant that comes through, we would, we would say no to the budget regardless of their expenditure or not, so that it's timely, so we don't put the fire board in a position to have to repay it. That's the only thing I can come up with. That's the only thing I can come up with. And, and and that's, that's a fault of our system, I think. So, I don't know.
And also feature different council members on it, you know.
Correct, correct.
They can pay that too.
It, you know, it's, it's no different than what happened with the police department like that. And the police had a grant, they it's a no to an employee, and the safer grant came a month later, right? Now say, you know, that's kind of around the system. In, in, in a no, remember, a no is, is a no for now. It's not a no forever. You know, it, it's, it's, we're in different situations in, in terms of economics. Uh, when we look at the fire, we see, uh, increase in operations based on towers, increase in the operations. How we still, and increase in operation because of, uh, four departments and it's incrementally being brought in. Uh, in, in, in our presentation, um, I, I observed that those are separate line items. So when we look at the operation budget, we don't see the full effect for the, for the, um, the tower and, and the engines. And what we're, what we're actually seeing is everything else but that. It is a nine, whatever, third of percent. I'm forgetting the fourth percent. It is that plus those line items. So when we try to discern and try to make a decision about a budget, we're seeing a fragmented picture.
That is actually not true. The entire institution that I'm asking for is for the entire voting, including releasing the engines and including the tower and including the pension and including the capacity accesses and including the insurance.
Okay, then it's not, is that, there's steps.
It is listed out in the next column that I included with this.
The, the two hundred million, whatever. Okay. So I would say.
And it's broken down on the operating budget, which is two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars for both cities, not just.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
That's just the operating, the whole entire budget is a three million, eighty hundred thousand, one hundred and ninety-one, which is presented in there, which is the amount.
Okay. Well, that's. Right. Let's see. Um, yeah, we can make a motion on that. It's just, we still got that as a justice, as a justice. Okay, I mean, that presentation of the budget, uh, that, that, that's the chief just presented doesn't negate that other point. No, it doesn't. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Oh, something to do with. Okay, I guess. All right. Um, the MX motion to approve the twenty twenty three West Metro Fire Rescue Big Big Project.
Is that right?
Yeah.
President. I see that. All right. All members of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. It's passed.
Thank you very much.
Hmm, thank you.
Six, six.
Okay. And. We covered to have a lot of points for the handles. And. Licking this mayor council. So, uh, as, as you know, uh, we discussed this briefly in July nineteenth work session. Uh, this relates to what I think took a lot of us by surprise, announcements and news stories that we were hearing right around July first, when we all went into a factory that just THC products, uh, five, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen. Uh, and so that raises a lot of, a lot of uncertainty, um, because frankly, the law does does address some regulatory issues regarding packaging details, point one and older. Uh, some of that, but frankly, it, it didn't cover a lot regulatory wise. Anyway, uh, and, and it did put the board upon the seat in charge of this. And so I frankly, I didn't expect to say they scrambled to deal with it. Local governments are scrambling to figure out what role they should play any in this. Uh, and there's what I'm talking about, the media license, your rule addresses in session, which was. Uh, and so the approach that I've been recommending, although there's certainly those in the industry that opposes, probably one that's doing business, is to put a moratorium on this, to give staff and the council an opportunity to consider this issue and come up with regulations if that's what we decide. So the whole idea behind this is to give you kind of breathing room to study the issue and then give direction to staff to come up with regulation if that's what we decide. As we're all learning about this, I have, since this hit the packet, frankly, since I sent it to the city, I've learned quite a bit more about this. And I've learned that there are those in the industry that argue these things have been legal for the last several years. Uh, and really, the only thing that happened is they put a cap on the amount of THC that it would be doing. I, I'm certainly not an expert in this and can scramble to try to get up to speed on it. I don't know that I, I agree with that. Uh, there's a lot of opinions. It looks like the state agencies were saying edibles weren't allowed. But then just pushback on that saying, wow, they're going to do this rulemaking so it doesn't, it doesn't have any legal effect. They're sending a piece on the Ninth Circuit, which is not our circuit. You know, so there's, there's a lot of ambiguity in the current state of the law or inspiring. The reason I'm raising this is because the ordinance that you see in the packet took what I thought was a pretty common sense approach to this. Whatever this became legal is what we're talking. Everything that was legal prior to that day, that's fine when my friend shook you down and you were selling low teens and things like that. You keep doing that. But whatever this THC new product that became legal, do I, well, again, this whole, well, actually it was legal before. And, and, and so as a result of that, I looked at, um, changing your definition of, in the amendment that I gave you, uh, changing the definition of cannabis product to take out some of that, that which was legal before and can answer, you know, trying to make that distinction just to avoid that ambiguity, uh, that, because frankly, I don't want to get in an argument over what had, what was legal to me. Because we're dealing with what's, you know, today's situation. Uh, and so, so I had proposed an amendment to cannabis products. We talked about threatening that any product that was became lawful was, and any edible cannabinoid product regulated by the Act effective July one. was any edible cannabinoid product regulated by the Act effective July one, two thousand and twenty two. And then I know the city council received a, an email from an attorney who works in this area. And it suggested making a distinction between THC dominated products versus those that only contain trace elements. So I did some looking at that. And frankly, I don't see any definition of, of what THC dominated versus trace elements of THC are. So I was hesitant to work that into the ordinance, just because frankly, we don't know what the decision came to. You know, what point does trace come down? You know, I'm not sure. And so what I did is attempt to address that is add this next sentence that says, this term excludes products that are not intended to be eaten or consumed by humans or that contain destigérable ingredients like that. Or that contain less than zero point one percent of any THC. So the law kept at a point three percent. And so I figured point one is to be relatively small amounts. And so that's my attempt to capture this phrase, Chanta. So that's why that's there as far as the exception. Again, with this idea that normal, this stuff was legal before, well, I excluded things that were legal before. So now what I'm trying to do with the exceptions, clarify that. The non-edible hemp products that we will offer to sell prior to December. Again, try to make sure that this ordinance really, and the issue really is the others. You know, the gum gears and things like that that have that THC in it. That's really sort of the focus. Is this perfect? No, but frankly, in my mind, you can't take three months to figure out what arrangement of ordinance language it would be because now we've kind of undercut the whole purpose of, of the ordinance. The idea is let's get started with figuring out concerted regulations if any is wild and get that done sooner rather than later, because the sooner you can get, we collectively can get our arms around this and we're going to be able to call some perspective. Get those regulations in place, the faster this moratorium can come out and we can move forward. So the last thing I'll say, Mr. Mayor and Council, is that I certainly didn't have this in mind when we were updating the charter. But if you recall, one of the things that we added to the charter was recording the statute of warrants without having to go to two readings in thirty days. Well, whoa, whoa. Here's something that came up back at fires. In my opinion. So, so I, I'm happy to answer any questions, but my recommendation would be to take action to actually adopt. This isn't a perjury, perjury, this actual adoption of the intermortgage with the, with the amendments that I presented. And I think it's a merit.
And that's the whole purpose for.
I do have. So you talked about the edibles, but beverage companies are going to come out with, with drinks that have trace elements too. Is that also covered?
As part of the edibles, you know, for you.
Okay. Okay, very good.
And then I just use the state definition.
Okay.
Well, I just a comment, I really appreciate you reviewing that letter we got last night. And, and you sent it to Anne too, so. But I appreciate you working quickly to work with that amendment.
For motion. Make a motion approving an interim ordinance authorizing, with, with the amendments, authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the sale of cannabis products.
All members of the table, please say hi. Hi.
Oh, yeah. Make a motion approving a resolution for summary language for publication of ordinance number twenty eight, twenty two, dead. We get the number? No, whatever. Four one. There you go.
Yeah. Zero.
Oh, zero.
All right. Brennan. Second.
Just with the understanding, I mean, I might have to tweak the summary a bit to reflect the amendments. So this, this with that actually. Thank you.
All members of the table, please say hi. Hi. We'll say name. All right, announcements. City council work session Thursday, August eighteenth at six thirty PM. For us, we're at Crystal Community Center, four hundred Douglas Drive, we assume Crystal Suite Living, three five one Douglas, we have hotels, most expensive office, three shirts and one for city offices will be able to manage to defend observation later day. All day, next week, until we is Tuesday, seven, six, seven, we have the council chambers. City hall here soon. City council meeting in work session are open, public, current, previous, are available, viewing, listening. Yes.
I'm going to meet.
We are.
I always thank. You got a second?
All right. The discussion. September twenty fourth is the police station hours.
Yay.
I, I have been making sure I didn't, I didn't say that.
And Mr. Mayor Council, just so you know, we will be getting your own private server, fires. We want you to see it before everyone. They can't.
Yeah, the announcements.
The top on top. Well, I don't know that it's on Friday. Isn't this Friday? It is this Friday from just coming in after, from six AM to eleven AM. Okay. Duncan. I'm hoping. Yeah, it's a great, great question. So it's been, it is for, it's fundraising for the social. Okay. I, I know. It's for the social. It's a great house.
Thank you. All right. All the other discussions. All members of the table, please say hi. Hi.